We're live streaming.
Can you everybody join me please in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor and Council, I'd just like to let everyone know we have been having internet issues here at City Hall, and that may affect the livestream that is going on right now. It is started and it seems like finance went through just fine. Just want to let everyone watching at home, if there's any issues, it's likely due to our internet connection here. There is a broadcast being recorded that we can upload later from YouTube.
Thank you, sir. Please take the roll.
Alderman Demas.
Present.
Thompson.
Here.
Patac.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Laveri.
President.
President.
Hernan.
Sue's absence.
Crane.
Here.
Mayor Grove.
Here. Glad to start off the meeting with our public comment period. An opportunity for you folks to bring up any ideas, thoughts, concerns, issues. Um, this again will be your, your time, your three minutes. Uh, we will probably not do anything to interrupt you at this point in time. And hopefully we have an answer for you throughout the meeting. If not, again, uh, feel free to contact us individually, um, anytime during the week. Anybody else to comment tonight?
Hello, Dina Hicks. Um, last time I was here, I brought in one of my furnace filters to show you, what we breathe in on a monthly basis. So I thought I would bring in a couple more this time so that you know it's not just a one-time thing or that I'm talking crazy. These are MRF thirteens as per, uh, Sierra Club recommendation. They are changed every month and, um, it's, it's not cool. Um, I know you guys, um, always say, well, well, call the EPA or whatever, but this, i- it's not just a one-time thing. This is a plant I put outside in, into June, and I just brought it in the other day. This is not normal growth. This is, I would say potassium perhaps in our air from Charis. It's not the only odd plant I have, and all of the trees in my yard have experienced since the Charis fire, extreme, uh, growth of like just their middle stems. So if you drive by my house and you look at all my trees, you'll see the same thing. And they ain't just me, and all of our trees though are younger because the EPA dug apart our, and I've been planting trees over the year, a couple of years. So, um, it's contamination, and I wish you guys would just finally take it seriously. We're not the only people here. You all have children, you all have pets. I'd like to see you guys bring in upper this filter to see if yours look this way. My daughter lives across the street, hers would be the same. I can bring those in if you don't quite believe me, but thank you.
Anybody else like to speak tonight?
Good evening, Dawn Hicks. I thought we would play a little game tonight. Um, you don't have to speak. I'm just asking if you raise your hand. Um, if it's a yes. Are any of you veterans? If you are, could you please raise your hand? Any of you have family members, kids, spouse, parents, anything like that, that are veterans? Mayor Grove, isn't your father a veteran? Okay, well, um, the reason I'm bringing this up is I know I've brought this up on several occasions over the last year and a half about veteran banners. I do have an example of an application that Peru uses. There are at least three local businesses that have done banners for our area towns. Um, approximately a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The cost is solely on the family or friends who want the banners. All I'm asking is for you guys to allow it, ask to have these forms at City Hall so people could come in and get one and just submit it, and also ask that, um, this city put them up from Memorial Day to Veterans Day. Mayor Grove, I know you had a, a Vietnam veteran in here last month and you told him, you know, thank you for your service. Do you believe you have military in your family? I think most of us do. I'm not sure why we haven't been able to make this happen. Every other town in our area has this. I've literally talked to state reps and they don't understand why the city of LaSalle is not honoring their vets. I even suggested us honoring our first responders, firefighters, paramedics, police officers. I think it would be wonderful to support our people like that. We need to make this happen. Veterans Day is right around the corner. I don't understand why we can't make this happen. Every other town has. And saying that we don't own the poles or we can't put Christmas lights, you have flags, American flags on the poles. There's no reason that we would not be allowed to have veteran banners or first responder banners on there. So I would like to move forward with this. It's been over a year. Let's do the right thing. Let's do what's right for the veterans, please. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak tonight? Anybody else like to speak tonight? Approval of minutes.
Your Honor, I make the motion that we approve the minutes of the, uh, regular city council meeting held October thirteenth, placed on file. Each alderman has a copy.
Second, motion Alderman Reynolds and Alderman Demas on favor.
Aye.
Against.
Motion carried.
Discussion and potential action on the following petitions.
Request from Ameren Illinois to break ground at eleven twenty-one Fifth Street to retire gas service for demolition and Pulaski Park, Fifth Street and Crozet to repair bad underground electric.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, motion Alman Patac and Alman Thompson on favor.
Aye.
Against.
Motion carried.
Request from Andrew Lamboli for a special event permit for use of city-owned property in the parking lot on Second and Wright Streets. Veterans Memorial Pool Parking Lot, parking lot adjacent to the pickleball courts at Hegler Park and sidewalk in front of five hundred Second Street for staging of vehicles and porta potties for UTV rides through the celebration of lights from five to ten PM Saturday, November fifteen, twenty twenty-five and related matters.
Andrew's here tonight. Would you like to address the council and, uh, say anything about this?
Well, I just, I was trying to come up with something that'd be fun. I saw last year you guys let the jeeps go through. So I've got a lot of friends who have side-by-sides. Figured it'd be a way to get people downtown LaSalle, so I was interested in trying to put on a ride. I have flyers if anybody'd like one, so they can see what it's all about. I've lined up Santa Claus. You know, I'm trying to get everything done.
So the parking lots would be for staging areas, people would trailer their stuff in, or are you gonna have your, the, uh, side-by-sides meet there?
We're gonna have the side-by-sides meet on First Street or on Second Street. And then we're, I've talked to the chief and he said, are we gonna come off of Wright Street or off of Buckland? Um, either one. Okay, then down First Street over to Union, out on Route six to the lights, and then we'll just backtrack the same way. And we're gonna meet, like I said, on Second Street. We have to have a place to put all the trucks and the trailers. And I'm not sure how I'm gonna get people down from Hegler. I'm looking into a bus to see how I can get people, the people who have to run trailers up, up there.
So they'll drop down here and then park in those designated parking lots and then come back to pick up their units down here?
Yep.
Okay.
I think they're asking for a special unit, uh, special permit because right now we do not allow l- those in town.
Well, they're not allowed them up six. We have to get a permit from the state.
I spoke with the chief about that.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be okay for that small part of the time.
Is this something that you would like to see happen annually?
Yes, I would, uh, make it grow, maybe get a charity involved with it. This is just my first year. Um, this is the learning curve.
You see a, you see a very, uh, strong interest in this?
I've gotten, uh, fifteen reservations already, and on my Facebook page, I've got another sixteen that's set are coming, and ninety that are interested. So.
So how many TVs do you think you're gonna have?
I'm hoping for forty. I've got twenty right now, roughly. I've even heard from, uh, Leonie Polaris, they're bringing five down.
Last year, Michelle Seneca kinda head up the, um, the Jeep one, and, uh, you Jeep people know that you get little ducks. So she had little ducks that she paid for herself and gave to people that came. I think Andy kinda saw that, said, oh, that might be cool to do something like this with the, the side-by-sides and, um, again, it's still gonna be open to the regular public as well. It just, you know, this would be something kind of a new thing to do.
Well, I think it's fantastic idea, and I really appreciate going about it through the proper channels. You know, plenty notice on everything and filling out the special use permit. I think it's fantastic.
Is this gonna be police led?
Yes.
That's my only concern. I'm assuming the majority of these are not licensed motor vehicles.
They're not licensed, but many of them technically would fall under street legal, like by general.
Right, but.
As turn signals and everything.
But I guarantee if I go to it, I'm gonna find some that shouldn't even be on the road. However.
Yes.
If the police are leading it, at least I know there's some control.
Exactly.
Because you know the quickest way for you to take a good thing, great idea and ruin it is that one moron is gonna do something stupid.
May- maybe chief, we could have, uh, an officer follow up the rear too.
And on my flyer, that was, I specifically said family friendly.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful idea too, as long as it's controlled because of insurance liability and everything else that go along.
Right, and on my Facebook page, I said proof of insurance will only be shown the night when everybody's signing in.
Oh, I like that. Okay, that took away one of my biggest fears.
So, so is this like, are we blocking off a time period for them to go through?
No.
Or they're mixing in with the cars and stuff or?
Well, it'll be a parade.
It'll be a whole parade.
It'd be kinda like a funeral. Yeah, they're pretty much, should be pretty much gathered, you know.
Yeah, cool. I think it's a great idea.
Maybe we do temporary stopping at, uh, three fifty-one and then again at Route six and Union, just to keep the pack together.
I mean, you're coming out past Oakwood and it's just like back, right? The whole deal there, yeah.
To look through and then back down.
Yeah, yeah.
Downtown and back up and head home.
This says five to ten. Is there a specific time in your plan on parade or?
Um, I, my flyer, I said our, um, our sign-in is from five till six thirty. We're gonna leave at hopefully six forty-five and head out, head out that way.
So we'll be dark. Does time change after before that gap?
Any questions for?
That brochure that you have there?
Yes.
Can you get a copy to Brent?
I, I have a copy of the flyer actually. I'd like to make that available to, is that what you asked for the flyer?
Yeah, we had, I got them first.
Okay.
I've, I've been to several of these events in different towns, and it's usually a really good time. The kids have fun. So it's just something I'd like to try this year, see how it all turns out.
Most towns have an ordinance for allowing in town.
Yeah.
I think LaSalle, through the only ones, we're, we're bordered all the way around. I know Oldesby, Spring Valley, Mendota and Utica have an ordinance for it.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's council's pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant a special event permit, uh, for the use of the city-owned property of the location seems requested, uh, with police supervision.
Second.
Motion Alman Thompson, Sam Alman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri. Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Request from Stephanie Bias for a special event permit for use of city-owned property in front of five fifty-two First Street from eight AM to two PM on Friday, November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, and Saturday, November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five for a food truck in conjunction with downtown Black Friday and Small Business Saturday and related matters.
They've crossed their Ts and dotted their Is, right?
Yep, Stephanie is here if you have any questions. They've, they've operated in LaSalle once, I think, this year already?
Yeah, we were here, um, with that guy's secret.
Did you have a good turnout for that?
It was great, and, um, this time would be with Petals by Peyton and her small business Black Friday, or I'm sorry, Black Friday sale last year went really well for her.
On our move, we, uh, approve the request from Stephanie Bias for special use permit, each and every alderman, let's go.
Second.
Motion Alman Demas, who's the second?
Me.
Alderman Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri. Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demas.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Stephanie. And, uh, Andy and so you guys, feel free to stick around if you want to. You don't have to anymore. Enjoy the night. It's up to you guys. If you wanna stick around, feel free to. Reports to city officers, communications, bids.
Discussion and potential action regarding bid results for the demolition of seven sixteen Buckland Street and related matters.
Your Honor, I move that we accept a little bid from Kersh and Company for eighteen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and no sense, they did it for a little bit.
Second.
Motion Alman Demas, Sam Alman Reynolds, take the roll please.
Uh, in, in view of the fact that this bid is not, does not appear to be fully responsive to the ordinance, it will take a super majority vote to pass.
How many is that? Six. Six?
Alderman Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri. Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demas.
Aye.
Thompson.
Nay.
Five to two.
Mayor, Mayor votes aye.
Six to two.
Six to Alderman.
Hmm?
Six all.
Oh, okay. So it got defeated. So we have another motion. So gentlemen, this goes back to the ordinance you guys granted on time you weren't here, uh, the, allowed for that. You're gonna have C situations a lot where you're gonna have multiple bids. Now they're a lot higher, and we're not gonna be able to take the lower bid because of that ordinance you guys approved. So we gotta, guys were all in on that two weeks ago, so we gotta kinda follow that, I guess. So that's, that's where we're at.
When we discussed the ordinance, there was a discussion in there that we could, uh, deviate from our checklist, and that's what I, I'm doing here. My main concern. So my main concern was we're not taking care of the little guy. And this is a little guy. He doesn't, he doesn't have a union behind him. He's not a corporation that has all the training and everything. And it's six thousand dollars cheaper to go with him than it is somebody else that's, that's got a union backing. So the little guy gets hurt here. And basically, we're sending, we're sending a message out to everybody. Don't bid in LaSalle unless you're, you know, you got the backing of a huge corporation or a union, which I think is unfair.
My concern, Alderman Demas, is the bigger guy that has to pay all these additional expenses, um, to be in business himself. So for six thousand dollars more, I'd much rather pay that to have a job done correctly, professionally, and most importantly, more safely.
So it's not just six thousand dollars in this show, just so everybody knows. The total bid was twenty-four thousand and eighteen thousand? So it's not just six thousand, you're talking like a third less. I mean, it's, it's good to say it's only six thousand dollars. But in this scope of project, when we start getting to two hundred thousand dollar projects, it could be some money. But again, you have to answer the taxes. So.
And this is exactly.
I think we should take the lower bid.
Well, we already went through it, Alderman. We voted on it. So. So that motion was defeated.
So we're taking.
Go ahead and move that we accept the other bid from Gillen Construction. Um, we've used Gillen in the past on Fifth Street, and we were happy with the turnaround. Uh, job was done professionally and quickly. Like I said, professionally and, uh, proficiently. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve a bid from Gillen Construction.
Second.
Motion Alman Crane, Sam Alman Thompson, please take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Nay.
Laveri.
Nay.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demas.
Nay.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
That doesn't have to be a two-thirds, correct? If, if, if the other one with Gillen, it does look like it complied with the ordinance. Is that correct, or did it appear that they checked all the boxes?
Yes.
They have checked all the boxes, then that is.
So the simple majority wins that one.
So it passes four to three.
Thank you, guys.
No, if it passes four to three, doesn't pass it, generally speaking, it needs five, you need a, well, this isn't an ordinance, so that can pass. If it was an ordinance, it, it could not pass by four to three. You need, uh, you need half the aldermen and you need, you need five votes. It would be messy if there was a fifth vote.
So what do you, I'm confused.
I am too.
Me too.
Well.
We probably should call, you wanna call somebody or?
No, no, but what I'm saying is generally speaking, for example, if this were an ordinance, four to three wouldn't pass because it would, it takes a majority of the aldermen, uh, of the city council in office, okay?
Whether they're here or not at that meeting.
That is correct, because that's where the mayor gets the vote. If, that's one of the times a mayor can vote. If there's four favorable votes for an, an ordinance, and that is half of the aldermen, it takes five to pass an ordinance, whether it be the mayor or the alderman. That is one of the three times a mayor can vote. Now, this isn't technically an ord- an ordinance, so I think it probably would be all right. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it'd probably be all right.
We better off waiting till Alderman, Hernan's here. We're all eight here.
So you're saying, you're saying because of the.
Well, if it doesn't pass, you gotta.
It has passed. Well, the mayor can vote on this.
Because this one, this one, uh, you're saying that the other one didn't pass, it needs super majority.
No, the other, the other.
Let me finish, let me finish please.
Sure, sure.
You're saying the other one didn't pass because they didn't check this checklist, right? So it'd take a super majority to get that one. It's crushed, uh, did not have all the checklist covered. This one, you're saying, has everything on the checklist covered?
Yes.
So it doesn't need a, a max majority or super majority?
But it's still any bid, right?
So doesn't it need a certain majority, but it's still any bid? It was bid. Okay. It, it, it was bid, and you have to remember that in regard to the ordinance that the alderman voted on and passed, the ordinance provides that the other bid of Mr. Kersh is not a responsive bid because it did not comply with the requirements of your ordinance. And the ordinance.
And that's the only reason why we'd have to have a super majority in that one?
That is.
Well, they didn't check all the boxes, yes, because if you go into prevailing wage compliance, and am I looking at the right one here? Yeah, I am. Okay, prevailing wage, contractor has complied with all provisions, only prevailing wage and federal Davis Bacon related acts, all rules and regulations, therefore, for the past five years. Now, that's yes. Yeah, there's a no here somewhere.
Yeah, it's under drugs.
Okay, contractor has complied with substantive use for public works, right? So they didn't check all the boxes, yes.
Well, the box that they didn't check, yes.
So, well, let's just, let's just.
All right, let me, I'm ready to get finished.
Well, let's make, well, let's make the correction on that because it's in.
No, no, can I, can I finish? The only box they checked no to has an or. They either have to, I think it was on the drug thing. And they either have to have a written policy in place or have a union contract that provides the same provisions. They checked the other box, yes, for the or.
If I can interject on that a little bit too, from my understanding, that is correct, that the Gillen operates under a union contract that has that provi- that.
It's in their collective bargaining agreement. So there are two ways you meet the yes under that one criteria. And, and.
Well, the, it needs to come down. We have a vote. We go with the other group, the last vote, four to three.
Little guy gets screwed again.
Appointments, resignations. Like your guys' approval to appoint Chief Stubber to the Illinois Valley Regional Dispatch, IBRD. My first meeting will be tomorrow. Obviously, on that board, it's myself, John Duncan, Chief Janik and Chief Swajcik, and I'll be Chief Stubber.
I see they just got awarded, huh, for, uh, best in, uh, state or best in the country.
Pretty sharp direction.
That's awesome, man, you're really.
Okay, I move that we appoint Chief Stubber to the IBRD.
Second.
Motion Alman Laveri, Sam Alman Thompson, please take the roll.
Alder- Alderman Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demas.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Chief tomorrow ten AM in the, in the fore running. Standing committees.
Discussion and potential action regarding the recommendation of the Finance Committee regarding the RMA Minimum Maximum Contribution Agreement and related matters.
Yeah, the Finance Committee voted to recommend that we renew our mid-max, uh, insurance. Uh, I stated at the Finance Committee that since, uh, nine, two thousand fourteen, we have saved over two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars by going with this program. It kinda incentivizes our workforce to, uh, work safely. Um, our Finance Director recommending that we do this, so that is my motion.
Second.
Motion Alman Patac, Sam Alman Laveri, to accept recognition of the Finance Committee, please take the roll.
Alderman Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demas.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Special committees. Chairman, the old business.
Uh, Your Honor, old business, Chief Stubber did, uh, hundred traffic, uh, patrol do up there in Pershing and, uh, Elbore. Do you write any tickets for?
Are you referring to Garfield and Prospect?
Would you bring up, uh, Doc, was it?
Yeah, it was pros- pros- it was Garfield and Prospect, not Garfield.
Yeah, so Garfield and Prospect, we were, uh, looked at that for a couple of weeks here. We put the speed trailer going in both directions, both eastbound and westbound. Uh, spent roughly about thirteen hours out there and observed roughly around two hundred sixty vehicles, uh, go through that intersection. Uh, seven had, uh, red and blue lights turned on and were pulled over and addressed. Uh, six stop sign violations, one speeding violation. Um, that's roughly equates about three percent of the people that traverse through the intersection, um, committed traffic violations at that point. The neighborhood was very, uh, ha- happy to see the police department out there. In fact, some thanked the officers for, for showing the presence out there as well too, so. Um, we can keep that, but that's what, that's what we found over the last two weeks.
Is everybody comfortable with that and putting a, a speed bump or anything?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna put speed bumps because they're only good in summer season or.
They're good for knocking balls or anything.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna put that in, so every now and then somebody sits up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job, Chief.
Your Honor, I have something under.
Yes, Alderman Thompson.
Um, just a reminder to the elderly people, because this is the child born of, um, this is a Medicare home call thing, and I got ten calls today. Every single one of them was a scam. AI has now made that person's voice, will even respond, depending on you respond. And the minute they get the right answers, which is, they receive Medicare and Medicaid, um, you know, blah, 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 blah. And then they say, okay, we stand by. And then I say, hi, here. Hello, this is Brian from, and I say, from Lahore or Mumbai? And today I had a lady stand at home with me for thirty minutes, um, having fun. She was having fun. Well, I told her they were coming for her and then she. Um, but it, now the scams because of AI, I guarantee you, we're gonna have a lot of local people getting scammed. They're gonna be coming to see the chief. You know how that works? But, uh, I just, just my reminder to the public and judge, I know we're having trouble with the internet, but I do know some people that watch this meeting. And it's a reminder, please, please do your business with that stuff locally, and over the phone, you're taking a huge risk. And I'd hate to see somebody lose their life savings and their, their destiny. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks for the heads up, Alderman.
Good job.
This was the open enrollment time for that, huh?
Yes.
Yep.
Any other old business?
Yeah, yes, Your Honor. Uh, in regards to the veterans that you referred to, um, I don't think anybody here on the board is a guest honoring our veterans. I know my dad was a veteran. We purchased a banner in Peru. That is handled, I know, I know Peru handles it by an outside organization. Peru CSO takes care of that. They handle the whole thing. They take your orders, they do everything, and then they put them up. I don't know how Oldesby does it, but to me, like, I don't know if that's a city responsibility. I'm sure we would all agree to go ahead and do that, but we need to have an organization do it. That, that is my opinion.
I think it would have to get Ameren's okay too, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't you go to VFW, check what the guys.
But we also, again, guys, we need to get confirmation from Ameren.
Yeah.
A flag, a flag goes in the wind. It doesn't act as a sail. If you see the ones that are on in Peru, the ones that are on Oldesby, they're, they're basically a flag, they're, they're a sail. And that's the problem. They said the wind is causing pressure on that, on those, those flags, so. That's the problem is.
Probably the first, first thing, and then, I, maybe the VFW do it, you know?
And that don't create a wooden pulse, right?
So, yeah.
I have another, um, I'm, we are constantly asked about the event that is being held in downtown LaSalle, November seventh, and I don't have details, but I went online trying to look. Could we get a look, a little overview of what's going on? Where can I go to see the agenda?
We, right now, if you go to livituplessale.com, um, under events and Frosty and First, there is a daily, um, scheduled events there right now. I'm currently updating the website for the big media push this week. Um, it's gonna be the seventh and the eighth. Uh, eighth is gonna be. Um, it's gonna be the seventh and the eighth, uh, eighth is gonna be a little similar to what we remember with, um, Runnin Rudolphs, gonna be taking place at the same time that it was the past two years. And we're gonna have live music both days, inflatable equipment, um, music, um, a bar, bourbon tasting, all the downtown businesses are gonna be participating in a passport system. So we're really trying to throw an event where the downtown is as involved, um, in this event as can be. So we're hoping that a lot of people are familiar with the Celebration Lights, come downtown LaSalle, shop, eat, explore downtown, and possibly come back when they visit Celebration Lights in the future as well.
So are we having a skating rink, is that correct?
Synthetic ice skating rink, correct.
And where's that gonna be placed?
Heart of our down, heart of First Street, yeah, I can't think of the intersection off the top of my head right now, but it's, it should be right in the center of that three blocks, turning from Joliet over to the west.
Right in front of your house. So, so will the public be able to ice skate?
Yes.
And you can rent skates?
Yep.
And this is gonna be held on Friday and Saturday, where they can skate?
Friday and Saturday, yep.
Okay.
It's all free, there's no rounds, you, they, they will bring.
Perfect. Yeah, we've done some press with the, the media as well, we're gonna have more on our social media page this week, and given that we're two weeks out, we're gonna wait till after Halloween a little bit as well, we're getting closer to Halloween. But it should be, we, we get, we went out to the community, I guess what we're talking about, we went out and looked for sponsorships to help support this event. We got a lot of great feedback from, uh, the business community that has really supported this and made it possible for us to have something like this. I think it's gonna be really cool, we've been hearing a lot of great things from the community that are interested in something different at a different time. Um, the summer is obviously very filled with different events, so this is something that's a little further out from competition of other events, there's not as much going on, so we got a lot of great feedback, we're excited to see how it goes.
Will there be fireworks?
There will be on that Saturday night, yeah.
And live reindeer. We're gonna have live reindeer there.
Christmas movies in the park, and downtown LaSalle is gonna be like one of those movies you see in the Hallmark movies.
Yeah, I think Hallmark's actually common.
One of these.
Maybe not this year.
Thing too, Tom, is that, uh, the, the sub isn't gonna be like an all week thing, I mean, the stage is coming remotely, so it's gonna be here, set up on the, on the Friday, and then leaves right away, so we're not gonna impede the downtown businesses, like, maybe we have this during.
And going off that too, the downtown businesses are very much a part of this this year, so in the past, you know, you'd have a lot of people walking past the businesses to get to the event, the downtown businesses are part of this event.
So is the ice skating rink just gonna be Friday only, or?
Friday and Saturday. Yep, Friday is five to ten, and Saturday's ten to ten. The inflatable equipment and the ice skating rink will be open.
Also many unique food trucks.
Yep.
That we've gotten, so, it's gonna be a good time.
Food trucks that don't interfere with our parking motor ones.
Right, correct.
Which is good, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
And we got, Kurt got a fifty thousand dollar grant. Tourist grant for this.
Oh, really? I think that's a fantastic idea, de- definitely worth a try.
A huge part of that fifty thousand dollar grant is, needs to be spent on marketing, as it is a tourism grant, looking to generate more interest in the city of LaSalle.
Old business, I wanna thank, uh, the downtown merchants for putting on the Go's Night Out, on Go's Night Out, Friday, uh, forty-eight, that went real well, drove down, suits a good traffic downtown, put traffic, which is great. Of course, the hometown Halloween was great, I appreciate everybody's help on that, Papa Poreks, police fire, the downtown businesses gave out, uh, trick or treat candy, another nice event. It's amazing now on that Saturday, I think there was like seven or eight other truck, truck or treat events going on, I know Speedway had a big one, so somebody told me their whole agenda, they had a plan to hit everything, so I know they had a lot of candy in that house, but thank you guys for that, uh, perfect. Uh, kinda announced already, but it's, it's not kinda old and new business, the leafback is out, started today. Again, it'll probably not follow their actual schedule, because not a lot are out yet, so they'll try to be going throughout the whole, whole city all week, and then, uh, once we get a large amount of leaves down, start that, you know, following that schedule pretty, uh, religiously. And of course, during this whole time, the yard waste still will be open, so, and I remember, remind everybody to please bring their IDs, because we need to make sure they show their ID there at the yard waste, so.
Brian, how's the, uh, well, well's operation, are we getting there close?
Uh, we did the test, test pumping, they, uh, when you test pump, you generally do one and a half times the rate that you would like to pump at. Um, the contract was for fifteen hundred gallons to pump, so we were hoping to get about a thousand gallons. Uh, we pumped at twenty-five hundred gallons and, uh, did really well, the, the, the level of the water stayed pretty good. And so we'll probably get somewhere between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred gallons per minute out of that well, so at least fifty percent more than what we were hoping for.
We'll go right to new business, gentlemen, anything on new business?
Yeah, mayor, I hadn't seen it, maybe it's just my neglect, but Brett confirmed before the meeting that trick or treating will be in the neighborhoods from five to seven on Friday, the thirty-first, yeah, yeah.
Weather looks decent, so that's good. Uh, and then, it was on my list, but Tom kinda hit already the Frosty and Firstes in those, November seventh and eighth. I know it was kinda by design, to kinda hold back a little bit of it, since it's gonna be early in the Christmas season, of course, I know a lot of people, I see already on Facebook, have their trees up for Christmas, and it's Halloween. But, uh, we'll be going right into the, the next, uh, season right away here on those, November seventh and eighth, and, uh, very excited about it, and we'll s- definitely see what, what happens first year of it. Any other new business? Discussion potential action on following ordinances and resolutions.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of the IML RMA Minimum Maximum Contribution Agreement and related matters.
This was approved, go ahead. I'll say this was approved as a recommendation, but this does require an ordinance, which is why it's on the agenda a second time.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Motion, Alman Patac, Sam Alman Thompson, you know, Alman has a copy, uh, take the role, please.
Alderman Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
And I'd just kinda piggyback off of Alderman Patac, that, you know, the reason why this is, we're able to save this money is because, you know, there's a good emphasis, and our, our, our employees are doing a great job, being safe, taking an extra second, thinking about something, we're gonna do something, and definitely appreciate that, because, uh, that's, that's the main reason why we're able to do this, this, uh, mid-max, so, thank you to our team. Chief Stuber, anything after, uh, two weeks here in the job? All right. Liz?
No, your honor.
Brett?
Nope.
Chief Janet? Kurt? Brian Brown?
Nothing further, mayor.
Terrence Fetter? Gentlemen, here. Uh, wanna say, I had to wave your birthday to Kurt? His birthday was, uh, Wednesday, happy birthday, Kurt. Gentlemen, no need for a second session tonight, it's with approval of bills.
Total submitted, one million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents.
Your honor, I move that we accept, pay, and file the bills of each and every alderman, have a copy?
Second.
Motion, Alman Patac, Sam Alman Laveri, please take the role.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Thanks for good meeting, gentlemen, often, I mean, uh, sorry, motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Alman Reynolds, Sam Alman Crane, the adjournment meeting, all in favor?